The time is after seven o'clock and we do have a quorum. I am going to call the meeting to an order. Okay, so it's just some ground rules to start off the day. Talking time. So when you, if you want to talk, please just come up and line, line up on the stairs in front of either of the microphones if you want to talk on any comment. Please keep your comments, Jermaine, to the conversation, to the article that is there. For the sake of brevity, try not to repeat other things that have been said, just please make your comments, original comments, and you will have only two minutes, a max of two minutes for each person when you're making comments. So, we will be using the clickers tonight, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of how these work. So...oh, you're not connected. All right. So, I just wanted to...the question is going to be...
Is this the first time?
Is this the first time using this technology? Okay? Push one if it's yes, push two if it's no. We're going to leave this open for 15 seconds and we'll see how everyone does. So you should look... You should look for a green light when you press the button on yours. Closing voting in five seconds. Two hundred and thirty votes cast? A hundred and thirty people have not used this before, a hundred of you have used it, but is everyone comfortable using the technology? So, we will go over that as, if we are using these, we will tell you exactly what number to push each time you're doing it, okay? All right, let's start with Article One.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before I read Article One, I'd like to thank everybody tonight for coming out to this town meeting, it's an important one, and we appreciate your attendance. So, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to waive the reading of the warrant and return of service thereof, and to authorize the moderator pursuant to MGL Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Fifteen, to declare a two-thirds vote on voice votes if he deems so.
Is there a second? Okay, this just means that we don't have to read all the words in every warrant, in the whole warrant, and just reference the warrant as we make our motions, and it allows me to declare yea or nay on a two-thirds vote via voice vote. If there is question, if it's close, we can always move over to the clickers at any time, and you can request that if you don't like the call. Okay? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the following community preservation projects, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. Not a separate vote, but a separate appropriation. For CPA fiscal year twenty-three, the recommendation is, one, for the Massachusetts Audubon Society Pleasant Valley Sanctuary towards repair of its all-persons trail. This is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the open space and recreation tranche in the community preservation funds. And two, for the Town of Lennox, the open space acquisition for forty acres of land north of East Dougway Road, which comes from, it's for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it comes two hundred thousand dollars from undesignated funds, and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from open space funds.
Is there a second? Explanation?
Yes, the Community Preservation Committee entertained two applications this June, July, and August, one from the Mass Audubon, and a second from a private citizen proposing that we purchase land for preservation located behind Brushwood Farms off East Dougway Road. So these two projects both fall very much within the purview of the Community Preservation Act and our goals as a community preservation committee. In terms of the Audubon Trail, it was severely damaged early last year with that microburst storm that disrupted town everywhere. The boardwalks were damaged, the trail eroded, so they're looking for funds to repair the trail. In terms of the land acquisition, it's about a forty-acre parcel, I've walked it many times, it's beautiful, it has trails, it is absolutely consistent with our goal in Lennox to preserve land. We hope one day that we will be able to connect this to the Kennedy Park Trails, and it's a wonderful piece of land to preserve for the Town of Lennox.
Seeing no comments. All in favor of Article Two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Sorry, folks. Article Three is really a housekeeping article. I move that the town vote to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant for this town meeting, except that Clause B will be deleted.
Is there a second? Explanation?
Sure, so this is really a housekeeping article. The vote that we just took in Article Two to make purchase of the land on East Dougway Road has to be executed by the Select Board, so this article gives them the authority to do that, to buy the land that we just approved buying in Article Two.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article Four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Lennox bylaws by adding a new Section Ten under Chapter Seventeen, exactly as appearing in the warrant for this town meeting.
Is there a second? Explanation?
Staff has worked with Town Council to craft a bylaw presented at our earlier town meeting in May with regard to puppy mills, in keeping with the intent of the citizens'
Okay.
Can I speak, can I make a motion to...
Hold on, is that on? Testing one, two, three?
Okay, Mr. Delgado is not a registered voter in Lennox, so, but he would like to speak, so I need a show of hands, at least ten people who would allow Mr. Delgado to speak.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Still introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Renaldo Delgado, from Pittsfield, from Pittsfield, Massachusetts. I want to thank the Select Board for approving this. Some quick points, it's not a zoning law, I know that was an issue before. Pet mill is not defined because you have to sell pets that are from animal control centers or animal shelters, so there's no need to define it, that was an issue before. Responsible breeders do not sell dogs to pet stores, so they have no need to sell to a pet store. And also, this does not prevent ordinary breeders from, you know, out of their house selling their pets, as they always have. And I have definitions for animal control center or animal shelter, for anybody ever objected to this, but I think this is a perfectly fine proposed bylaw. I endorse it, and I want to thank the Select Board for all the work they did. Thank you very much.
Okay. Voting on Article Four. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article Five.
Okay, Article Five, I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Lennox bylaws by adding a new Section Sixteen under Chapter Thirteen, exactly as appearing in the warrant for this town meeting.
Is there a second? Explanation?
Unlike many peer communities, Lennox's bylaws fail to specify noise limits in residential areas. Currently, it is up to the Police Department to address the most egregious examples of commercially generated noise through subjective standards. They deserve a clear standard to work from, which this amendment, this bylaw amendment
Okay, voting on Article Five. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you, if you'd like to, well, we're actually already called the vote, but usually if you'd like to discuss, you should come up to the microphone and you can ask those questions. But is that a nay or a yea?
It's a nay.
Nay, okay. It carries. Article carries. But if you would like to discuss anything, you just come up to the microphone, stand up to the microphone as I explained earlier, so you can, to discuss. Article Six.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars...
Excuse me, can I ask a question? There are residents still standing outside trying to get into this building. I was out there for ten minutes, I missed the first ten minutes because we've all been stuck in line. What is going on? Microphone here.
Number one, you haven't, you're not at the microphone. Number two, you need to be recognized by me before you speak.
Sure.
Okay.
Could you recognize me, please?
Yes, there are people outside. We did have a quorum, and I went and looked at the line, and I only saw twenty people in line, so the people who were out there had to be coming after seven o'clock, so I apologize. I went and looked at the line before I came and called the meeting to an order, to see how many people were in line.
Thank you very much, then.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I'll start over. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town manager for paving town streets, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and further, to provide for said appropriation, transfer the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash, so-called, as certified on July one, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Explanation?
Yeah, we, in the past few years, we've gotten, so we'd like to present this article, our annual paving article, at this meeting if there is a fall town meeting. It gives us a chance to get lucky with some bids, we get, you know, it gets to the contractors early, so we can usually get a favorable, favorable bid, and it's worked in the past. The plan for this year is to pave Housatonic Street from Route Seven and Twenty all the way to Crystal Street, and the sidewalk from Route Seven and Twenty to East Street.
Okay. Voting on Article Six. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, folks, Articles Seven and Eight both involve pretty substantial capital expenditures for the town that we're going to ask you in those articles to approve, and we, as the Select Board, thought it'd be worthy to have our town manager, Chris Ketchin, present a financial picture of the town and sort of a rough summary of how these projects would be paid for, before we got to the actual articles.
Mr. Moderator, Christopher Ketchin, three eighty-eight Housatonic Street, the town manager. Okay. Okay, so, so thank you all for coming this evening, and I just want to briefly go over the financial plan for why we're bringing the seventy million dollars worth of appropriations in the next two articles. The combined sixty-plus million in construction plus contingency is for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade under Article Seven, and this is a federally funded, or federally mandated phosphorus limit compliance issue, and twenty-plus million for the public safety building to address code and other noncompliant issues with the police, fire, and EMS department and their current facilities. For planning purposes, we've assumed that the wastewater treatment plant will be subsidized by a thirty percent federal USDA grant, as well as a subsidized loan for a period of forty years, leaving twenty-eight to thirty-one million dollars in town-funded debt, approximately one point three million dollars in annual debt service every year. The public safety building does not benefit from state or federal funding, we're looking to amortize that over twenty-five years, approximately one point six million in debt service in year one, with the plan to amortize on a level principal basis so that the debt service levels will decline over time. So when you hear the large numbers, keep in mind that the impact to you as taxpayers is remarkably smaller than it would be if you lived in any other town due to the position that we're in. If there was ever a time when we could do these projects, it appears to be that now is that time, for a variety of reasons, both in terms of the physical plan as well as the town's fiscal position. So we've got two, two big projects, and the question at hand is, you know, how are we going to pay for them? We're fortunate, partly because of where we live, and also partly because of our fiscal discipline as a town, that we've budgeted fiscally conservatively over time, we enjoy a triple-A bond rating, which is the highest achievable bond rating status for municipalities, we have surplus lodging revenue that far exceeds the amount that we dedicate towards running the government, and that trend has lasted long enough so that we can be reasonably certain that it's going to continue into the future. We also have declining debt payments in our wastewater debt, so wastewater revenue will become an increasing source of funds to pay the debt service on the treatment plant over time. So because of these, this confluence of factors, all coming together at once, what would normally be a fifteen to twenty percent tax increase in any other town is five percent by our estimates in, in Lennox because of our extremely strong financial position. So, the plan moving forward would be to utilize the surplus lodging tax, a ten percent increase in sewer rates over time, and a five-point-six percent levy increase to fund the early years of both projects, and again, that would be declining over time, and I'll have a pie chart that demonstrates that here in a moment. The existing enterprise debt, as it's retired, will shift the burden away from the general fund towards the wastewater fund, again, over time. And the net result would be no impact on lodging tax revenue dedicated to town and school operations, which is about two million dollars right now. It's a modest but declining impact on property taxes over twelve years, and a modest increase to sewer rates, and no projected impact on our free cash position or available funds, which we use to fund other capital projects through cash. So this is more or less what the composition of the year-one debt service would look like. The green, representing about thirty-three percent of the total, would be derived from property taxes, or nine hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, another one hundred and seventy-one thousand from wastewater revenue, or sewer, sewer fees, and a little over one point seven million from lodging surplus. Sorry, I'm having trouble with my...so this is the debt profile, the current debt profile for existing wastewater debt, and you'll see that it declines over time. So the far, the far-left bar represents the fiscal year that we are currently in, two thousand twenty-three. We estimate that the debt service payments won't start to impact our, our budget meaningfully until FY twenty-six, more likely FY twenty-seven, and then, over the life of the, the bond, we'll see a decline in debt service on existing debt in the wastewater fund of about three-quarters of a million dollars, a little less than three-quarters of a million dollars that we can shift away from the general fund toward funding debt service on the plant, which will free up, free up general fund resources to dedicate towards the public safety building. So after twelve years, reliance on the property tax, as you can see by the green bar, will shrink, wastewater enterprise revenue will take on more of the burden, and the amount on the lodging tax surplus will remain more or less static. So this just rehashes the, the plan moving forward. So in the next couple of fiscal years, we'll incrementally raise sewer rates and dedicate that, along with the, the portion of the surplus lodging excise to accumulate in a stabilization fund. So to the extent that any of our, any of our projections that we're making here turn out to be wrong, we will have a stabilization fund to address those deficiencies and appropriate from, to even out the, the impact. And then in FY's twenty-six to thirty, we'll allow the surplus lodging excise revenue from the, from the sewer rate increase and the five-point-six percent levy increase from property taxes to, to cover all the debt service costs along with the, the surplus lodging. So then in FY's thirty, thirty-five, and thirty-eight, where we see the biggest drop-offs in our existing debt service on sewer, we'll, we'll redirect those, those resources toward debt service payments on the wastewater bond for the plant. And then, the reality of the town's excess levy capacity being in excess of four million dollars, that means that we will not subject any of these bond issues to a proposition two-and-a-half override. That's good. So with that, I can take questions, I, I think we have a question, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so when you come up to the microphone to speak, please, your name and where you're from, your address.
So, Chuck Kosher, fifteen Chestnut Lane. My question or my comment is regarding the Article Number Seven. My objection is to using general funds at all for this project. Forty-five percent of the taxpaying residents will not benefit directly at all from this project. When I bought my house, which has a septic system, I knew what I was getting into, and I've borne the cost of tens of thousands of dollars to repair my field, and without any, any assistance. And so, what you're basically, the question comes up, why don't you just pay for this all by raising the, the sewer fees? Sewer and water were our enterprise funds, they've always have been, to be paid for by the users of the enterprise funds. So, raise the sewer fees to pay for this. I know the answer to that question, and the answer's going to be, well, it would make the sewer fees too expensive. It would put it out of reach for those that have to pay for the sewer fees. So basically, what you're asking us, all of us septic system people, you're asking us to subsidize Canyon Ranch, Aravel, every other business, every other person in town to pay for their sewer fees when we have to bear the cost of our own systems. Now, the other comment will come back and say, well, it's for the common good, you know, we need to do this because it's for the benefit of the town. The school has a sewer, needs a sewer system, so we need to do that. Well, the school would pay higher sewer fees, and we would all equally share in those higher fees through our taxes for the school. So basically, what you're asking forty-five percent of us is to subsidize you for the common good, and what that means is, some of us are going to be paying more for the common good than the rest of you.
So, I, I think that's a, that's ostensibly a fair comment. What I wish I had done a better job of in the presentation was to demonstrate, and I think I might be able to do that now, that property taxes in this scenario are less than a million dollars as a revenue source. The debt service in year one for the public safety building alone is one point six million dollars. So I guess, in response, I would argue that the property tax is not funding the sewer plant, to be fair. The general fund is partially contributing to the sewer plant, but not through property taxation, and all of the generators of the surplus lodging tax, which is the revenue source of choice in this scenario, are sewer users.
Okay, before we get into discussions, I'd like to have a motion.
Let me go right to the motion. I was going to add a little bit more explanation.
Well, you can do that after you make the motion and get a second.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Who are you?
Phil Gilardi, fourteen Pine Hill Road, Lennox. I'd like some clarification on the forty-five million dollars that are...
We're going to wait till we get into the, we haven't actually made a motion yet, so we haven't opened up discussion yet. That's what I'm trying to get him to do, so to make a motion, and then he'll be able to answer your question once we get to that one. All righty.
Okay, so it looks like we should get to the motion. So, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of forty-five million dollars to pay costs of construction and reconstruction of a wastewater treatment plant, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this obligation, a treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow up to forty-five million dollars under General Law Chapter Forty-four, Subchapter Seven, Parenthesis One, or any other enabling authority. That the Select Board is authorized to contract, contract for and expend any federal or state aid that may be available for the project, and that the Select Board and the Permanent Building Committee are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project.
Is there a second? Explanation?
Sure. In summary, we have no choice. We have to upgrade our wastewater treatment plant. Many years ago, at the federal level, affluent standards for any operators of wastewater treatment facilities were modified and made more strict. When that was passed down to states, our permitting body, the Massachusetts DEP, when they rewrote our Nipte's discharge permit for our wastewater plant, included standards that we cannot meet with our existing plant. In a nutshell, phosphorus is the main issue, that's the sort of driving force behind requiring us to modify the plant to be able to meet the discharge requirements. Over the last two years, after having received approval from this town body, more than once to expend money on engineering study and design, the design engineers that we've hired have looked at the entire plant and come up with the least expensive option to, A, meet the mandatory standards that we can't meet without modification, and B, to retrofit parts of the plant upstream of the final treatment process, so that the entire plant works cohesively as a whole and inexpensively as possible.
Phil Gilardi, fourteen Pine Hill Road. I have a question on the, on how much this is going to cost. The warrant says we're going to authorize forty-five million dollars, but your handout says you're going to get some money kicked back from the Department of Agriculture and federal funds, and I think Mr. Ketchin mentioned that the cost to the town would be some number lower than forty-five million dollars. I thought it hurt, thirty-ish million dollars. Could you explain what happens if they don't, you know, does the forty-five million dollars that we appropriate today cover the whole thing in case the agriculture department and the other funding don't come through? Or is it possible, when the funds come through, we'll only be on the hook for thirty million dollars? I'd just like some clarification to find out how much this is going to cost, because I know construction costs today go up. But is it forty-five million, thirty million, and what do you do if you don't get the grants?
Let me see if I can clarify for you. So there's a few questions in there, and you are correct. First off, forty-five million dollars is the total proj- First off, $45 million is the total projected cost that also includes, by our engineering firm, contingencies for unexpected rise in construction costs and other things going down the road. So it's a conservative number. We, at the Permanent Building Committee, our engineering firm, Dave Prickett sitting over there, the head of that firm, we have many ideas to try to whittle down that $45 million number, but $45 million is our worst-case scenario total cost. We do expect to receive a grant from the USDA somewhere around $15 million. In the unusual format that the USDA works, we have to, as a town, approve the total cost of the project before they will entertain our application for their grant. However, Mr. Prickett has done this for many other municipalities. The USDA is a reliable source of grant funding for wastewater treatment facilities, so it's very, very likely that we will receive grant funding, but we're required to ask for the total amount, yet we are probably only going to ask you to bond $28, $30 million tops. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
So Chuck Kosher again. I don't accept the distinction between the general fund and real estate taxes. The general fund is real estate taxes. Unfortunately, this article is put together in a way that we cannot separate the need for the project and the way in which it's being paid for. And so my question is, if this were to be voted down tonight, with the intent being, we don't like the way you're paying for it, what would you do next?
Well, what we would do is not necessarily what we would do. If our town were not to undertake the process of upgrading our plant to meet the requirements, the Massachusetts DEP is authorized to fine us up to $25,000 a day. That's just cash out the window, period. So there's immense peril to us not doing this project. The thing I want to say about your question, it's a very valid concern. I understand, not everybody's on sewer. We looked at many scenarios, or many models, if you will, when we're thinking about funding this, including hitting the sewer rates as hard as we thought we could, and it just didn't make a dent in the project that was meaningful enough. The magnitude of this project is so large, we're talking about, you know, I don't have the pie chart, but, you know, what was it, $2.5 million in debt service per year, something like that? So when you think about the fact that our fortunate position as a town means that surplus, I'll call it tourist revenue, is paying for more than half this project, tax levy about 33%, the sewer rate adjustments, we looked at 10%, we looked at 50%, we looked at 60%. It just didn't make a big enough dent that it wouldn't be still a levy to town. The other thing is, we, as a select board and the permanent building committee, tried to think about, what do we do about this surplus tourist revenue that we have? We have two projects that we're talking about. They really should be applied to both of those projects. Either one of these projects could be conceivably funded entirely by that revenue, but then the other project shows a dramatic levy impact. So that's why we had Chris talk to you before we got to either of these spending articles, try to explain just what an impact the tourist revenue has on it.
All of that's very good information, but it still doesn't take into consideration the fact that you're unfairly asking a large segment of the community to bear more of the burden than everyone else. That's what the bottom line is. And so, either you go back and look at the funding again and come up with a way where you don't do that. The sewer system is supposed to be an enterprise fund. Users pay for it, period. I paid for my own septic field, no one else helped me pay for it. So that's the main objection. And, you know, if you want to go forward with this project, then I would hope that future select boards find a way to make whole those of us that aren't going to benefit as much from this as, you know, maybe you have a lower tax rate for those on septic systems.
Okay.
There might be a woman there coming down.
Hi. I'm Debbie Burke, and I live at 216 Hubbard Street, and I have a very old sewer system. And I have put into the sort of calculations of our expenditures over the next couple of decades that that's probably either going to have to be replaced, or we'll have to figure out a way to hook up to the sewer system. Nonetheless, it benefits my town to have an up-to-date sewer system. If it doesn't meet federal standards, and it doesn't meet state standards, and it leads to potential pollution issues, which can affect everybody in town, those of us who live here, and those who come to visit, then we are all harmed. If you take the argument of just the enterprise fund to the extreme, I would have to pay to use the bathroom in this building, or in town hall, or in a restaurant, because I'm not paying into the enterprise fund, even though I want to have public services. So I appreciate Chuck's concern. I understand it. My pocketbook will feel it, but I still strongly suggest and support the idea of upgrading the sewer system to the degree it needs to be upgrading. I hope you guys did your homework. I believe you did a good job in putting together a reasonable funding proposition.
Gareth Coco, 980 East Street. I'd like to go back to Chuck's original...
What was, I didn't get to...
980 East Street. So my original, my question is, follow-on from Chuck's, which was, you did not answer his question of, I think I agree with the lady who just spoke. I'd like, I have sewer, but I'm happy to, I have my own septic system, not on the sewer age, but I agree the town should do it. His question was, if people disagree because of the other funding, have you thought of alternate ways which doesn't cost those who don't use that system? And I don't believe you answered that question. And that's what I'm asking, and what Chuck said was, have you thought of other ways of doing it? Or what would you do if it got voted down to be able to fund this? That's a, we'll deal with that if we have to deal with it.
Well, in reverse order, we can't pay for this unless town authorizes us to spend the money. So what we would do would be, be in trouble for a while, while we hope that DEP doesn't fine us. My attempt to answer Chuck's question was that we looked at lots of scenarios to pay for this using the sewer enterprise fund, and no amount of increase to sewer rates made a big enough dent that there wouldn't still be a tax levy to people that are, that's across the board, town-wide, to people that are not on sewer. To Depp's point, the funding mechanism that's paying for over half of this project is almost entirely dependent on sewored operations. Hotel rooms, they're all sewored. So the tax benefit, excuse me, the tax surplus that we're employing to help pay for these projects that we have to do is enormously supported by businesses that wouldn't exist without having a wastewater treatment facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We are voting on Article Seven, and this is a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
We'll go with the clickers, if you'd like to do that. There's, he's called for that. If, yeah, we'll just go ahead and do it. Okay, so, okay, so we're ready to go. Press one if you are in favor, or voting aye for Article Seven. Press two if it's a nay.
15 seconds.
Okay. So there's 363 yays and 29 nays. The vote carries. Article Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $25 million to pay costs for the following projects, including the payment costs incidental or related thereto, constructing a new public safety building, facility, rehabilitation of the current structures that house the central fire station and police station. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is authorized to borrow $25 million under General Law 44, Subchapter 7.1, or any other enabling authority. That select board is authorized, that select board is authorized to contract and expend any federal or state aid money that may be available for this project, and a select board and a permanent building committee are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out these projects.
Is there a second? Explanation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So presently, the police department is located in the cellar of the town hall. The fire department is in the building adjacent to the town hall. Each building is over 100 years old, having many deficiencies for any kind of present-day police or fire and EMT operations, from mold issues, overcrowding, litany of code issues, no decontamination areas, tight engine bays that force us to purchase custom-made vehicles to fit in the equipment bay. And these two sites have frankly reached the end of their life, useful life, as a public safety facility. The time's come to build a modern facility. As you can see in the motion, there are two parts to this. First is to construct a new public safety building, and second is how to deal with the present police and fire department buildings, or facilities. The plan is to construct a new 19,000-square-foot facility at the corner of Route 7 and 20 and Husatonix Street, across from Caligari's Hardware Stores, also known as Sawmill Brook, currently owned by CPC and Affordable Housing. Transfer of that ownership will be addressed in Article Number Nine. The facility will be large enough to house everything needed for the current services, plus have enough area for future expansion if needed. It will have all the essentials and necessary equipment, such as decontamination room, proper storage for equipment, Sallyport and garage for the police department, and proper cells, proper bookkeeping, interrogation rooms, and on, and on, and on. And the other part of our focus since the beginning of this project was what to do with the old firehouse and police station facility. So we've completed, just got done this summer, a complete assessment of the sites, and many, many building code and general renovation items that would need to be addressed, depending on the future use of the sites. What that, what we have now is that information. What we'll do with that information is, at the time period, we haven't decided what to do with the buildings yet. That's a whole different discussion, or not different, it's part of the continuing discussion. But that's what we'll focus on for the next probably two years, while the new building would be under construction. So at the end of that period, when the police and fire departments move out, we have a planned use for that building, and we don't have a vacant building sitting in the middle of town. So over here, I have, we have Chief O'Brien from the, Chief Chris O'Brien from the fire department, Chief Steve O'Brien from the police department, and Jim Hanafin, our engineers from Kelo and Beenick, who's been very helpful on this project. So if there's any questions that I can't answer, I'll gladly point out these gentlemen to help us. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Diane Sheldon. I live at 32 Old Stockbridge Road in Lenox, and I'd like to just ask a brief question. That being, is, of the $25 million that are being proposed, I'd like to know how much of that is towards the construction of the new public safety facility, and how much of it is for the rehabilitation, unknown rehabilitation of the current structures? It would be interesting to know what ideas have been tossed around.
That's, I should have addressed that already. The price we're looking at for the new facility is about $20 million. We have estimates for the other two facilities. One was in the $5 million range for the old firehouse, and maybe about $2 million for the work in the cellar of the original town hall. So it's, we're at that magnitude. It's a lot of work that needs to be done. And there again, that depends on what the use of that, those facilities are going to be. That could change to a lower number. This is a worst-case scenario.
I believe the second part of my question was, have you discussed what future usage of those areas might be? Would it benefit the town itself? Would it be open areas for perhaps residents to meet in?
It could be many, many different things. We haven't, we haven't sat down and discussed that. I know that's going to be, there's going to be a lot of different opinions about that. So we want to be, we're going to have, we'll have public hearings. We're not just going to do this in a closed room. This is going to be something that's going to be town-wide and put out there for everybody to, so we can figure out the best use for those buildings. So not to worry, there's, you're going to hear a lot more about it. We haven't come to any kind of a conclusion of what the future of those buildings will be.
Hi. Jim Harwood, 34 Walker. I'm basically in favor of the project. I heard you mention that the property, the Sawmill Brook property, is currently an asset that belongs to the Affordable Housing and Community Preservation. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
How are they being compensated for the use of the land?
That'll be addressed in the next article. We'll make them haul.
Thank you.
Richard Defazio, Pine Noah Road. If anyone has been to the police station, or the fire station, you know what these people have to work with every day. I mean, it's nice to go to work and have a nice place to work. The facilities there are awful. The fire trucks, they could just barely get them into the, into the fire station. They must do magical tricks to get those trucks in there. So I'm for, for, for this proposal. And God bless the fire department, and the police department, and the EMTs for what they do for it. Mr. Moderator, may I make a suggestion? At future town meetings, that electronic voting system was designed to show on the screen how much time is used for voting. So people can see it right on the screen, they know how much time they have to vote. And it was also designed to show a graph of how the vote came, okay? It's a lot easier for the people in the audience to see on the screen how the vote is going. So from now on, in future meetings, I hope you do that. Thank you.
Okay. We're voting on Article Eight. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Could I say one thing, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, you can.
I just want to thank, on behalf of the police department, the fire department, the permanent building committee, Mr. Ketchum, our town manager, and the Board of Selectmen, the select board, I want to thank you very much for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and management and control of the property described in a deed recorded with Berkshire Middle District Registry of Deeds in Book 4809, Page 204, Map 45, Parcel Number 1, to the town of Lenox, acting by and through its Board of Selectmen, currently held for community housing purposes, pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 44B, for general municipal purposes, including, but not limited to, a public safety building. Registry of Deeds in Book four-eight oh-nine, page two oh four, map forty-five, parcel number one, to the town of Lenox, acting by and through its Board of Selectmen, currently held for community housing purposes pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter forty-four B., for general municipal purposes, including but not limited to a public safety building. And further, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of six hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents from Free Cash, so-called, as certified on July first, twenty twenty-two, or other available funds, to the Community Preservation Fund.
Is there a second? Explanation.
Okay, so this land was originally purchased for community housing, and a bond was issued by the town to cover the purchase, which was six hundred thousand dollars. Because community housing is one of the several purposes for which the CPA funds can be used, each year for the life of the bond, town meeting appropriated from CPA to pay the debt service until that debt was paid off. While several attempts were made to build affordable housing on that site, no developer has been able to put forward a proposal for this particular property, owner or rental, that was both realistic and/or acceptable to the town. Furthermore, because Article eight contemplates using this land for purposes other than community housing, i.e. to construct a police-fire EMS facility, it's proper to reimburse the CPA for funds used to purchase the land and the debt, service the debt. So the aforementioned six hundred thousand dollar principal, plus thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents in interest. This will allow the public safety building to be constructed on land that the town already owns, while also returning the fiscal resources to the CPA to pursue other opportunities. Finally, the proposed funding source is a transfer from the town's general fund, Free Cash, so the appropriation will have no impact on the property tax rate.
Okay, we're voting on Article nine. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Article ten.
Oh, that's all right. Good evening. Tom Delasco, twelve Hillside Drive, Planning Board Chair. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting Section ten point three, Wireless Telecommunications Overlay District, and replace it with a new Section eight point one eight, Wireless Communications Facilities, as set out in the handout available at town meeting, in substantially the same form as discussed at the Planning Board's November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two public hearing, or take any action in relation thereto.
Is there a second? Explanation.
The zoning bylaw presented before you tonight is the culmination of about two years' worth of work by the Planning Board. We've utilized the services of two different consultants over that time, who have guided the board through the maze of federal law and technical nature of wireless communications infrastructure. We've also pored over countless documents, compared bylaws from many other towns, read studies, listened to constituents, and made adjustments along the way. The Planning Board is confident that this bylaw forms a delicate balance between the need for additional wireless service coverage, and also limits the intensity of this commercial-type use on our mostly residential community. There are parts of federal law which limit the authority of local governments in the regulation of wireless communication facilities. One reads in part, "The regulation of wireless service facilities by any state or local government shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provisions of personal wireless service." The other reads in part, "No state or local government may regulate wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions." The current bylaw is not in compliance with the first part, in that it restricts wireless infrastructure placement to five specific parcels along the Route seven and twenty corridor in the vicinity of the Mass. Dot District Building. Lenox only has three cell towers: behind Lenox Fit, inside the steeple of the church on the hill, and on a utility pole on West Street near Tanglewood. These all fall well outside the five parcels and leave large parts of town with poor service. It also does not provide for townwide coverage, and because of the restrictions, leaves the town susceptible to undesirable, undesirable proposals. The new bylaw is compliant with federal law, opens up more parts of town for prospective infrastructure, which would provide for townwide coverage, provides discretion to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and provides for ample public review and input during the special permit process. All applications for new installations are subject to the special permit process and thorough review by the Zoning Board of Appeals. An application to modify an existing facility shall be subject to the administrative approval process by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Applicants must prove to the Zoning Board that a new tower or antenna installation is needed through a determination of need process. They also must comply with a qualitative and quantitative set of criteria, which outlines preferred locations and seeks to maximize setbacks. The applicant must also notify abutters within six hundred feet of property lines of a proposed installation. This is more rigorous than the normal notification requirement for special permits, which is three hundred feet. A strict set of design criteria must be followed, which outlines federal and local code requirements, concealment and camouflage, landscaping, signage, lighting, and noise level requirements. The applicant must also submit a complete design package consisting of a detailed, detailed design drawings, photo simulations, radio frequency emissions analysis, noise analysis, and a technical report. They must also pay the town to hire a wireless infrastructure consultant to assist and advise the Zoning Board of Appeals. This all culminates in a set of public hearings where the Zoning Board weighs input from the public, both for and against a special permit application. Any applications made for a wireless communications facility on town-owned land would also have to be approved by the voters at a town meeting. There are no byright uses for wireless communication facilities. All require a special permit or an administrative approval. New towers are prohibited in the Commercial C districts. Can this go backwards too, Chris? Okay. So as I said, new towers are prohibited in the Commercial C districts, shown in red, which are the Village Downtown districts in town and in Lenoxdale. They are also prohibited in the small residential R fifteen and R thirty districts, shown in yellow and orange, which are immediately surrounding the Commercial C districts in town and in Lenoxdale. Colocation of a wireless communication facility on subsidized multifamily structures of twenty units or more is prohibited. This includes facilities like the Curtis and Cameron House, among others, in town. Colocation of an antenna on an existing structure, like a barn, must be set back at least a hundred feet from an abutting residential property. This means that the minimum lot size must be point nine acres to comply. New towers must be set back at least two hundred and fifty feet from residential or school property lines. This means that the minimum lot size must be five point seven acres to comply. This restriction prohibits towers from most, if not all, of the densely populated neighborhoods in town. The setback may be reduced, when appropriate, to no less than one and a half times the height of the tower by a supermajority vote of the ZBA. That's it.
Okay. All right, we're going to open this up to discussion. If you would like to come down, comment, please step down to the microphone, tell me your name. Again, you're going to be limited to two minutes per person for comments.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a comment?
Okay.
Okay.
Who are you? You got to tell me.
Yes, I do. The comment I'd like to make is that the, the, the select board would like to thank the Planning Board for the two years that they have spent developing this comprehensive amended bylaw. We appreciate what they've done, and we fully support the bylaw as has been, been presented tonight. I thank you very much, guys. I appreciate what you've done for us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Scott Barrow. I'm at fourteen Old Stockbridge Road. And over the last eighteen months, I have had at least forty dinners and many glasses of wine with the Planning Board.
We haven't had any wine.
So I, and I think all of us that have been involved in not agreeing with this have also really appreciated all the work that's gone into it. So what my concern, well, concern doesn't do us any good, but essentially what, what we're looking at is instead of having a wireless, we're having a wireless telecommunications bylaw, it's turning into a communications bylaw, which is a whole different animal. And so whereas telecommunications is really about being able to make a telephone call outside your house, which is what the FCC standards require, a communications bylaw is really about capacity, which is set up so that the telecom industry can sell us stuff that's coming all through town, and is, their goal is really to replace the, the stuff that comes into our house now, our, what we're streaming or our internet is coming in through either fiber optic cable or through wired cable coming in from various, like spectrum companies like that. So we already have that, and what we really need is better cell service, and that's what everybody talks about, and this is so far reaching beyond that that it's not necessary. I think that there's ways to make this happen without having to be in a situation where we actually do have towers in town. I am one of the people that believe that hanging out next to a cell tower is not good for you, and generally isn't good for the environment, and I know we're not supposed to talk about it, but that's how many of the people in this room feel, and nobody in this room wants to have their house next to a cell tower. So.
Channing Gibson, one forty-one Cliffwood Street. Mr. Moderator, in today's world, fewer and fewer locations are wired with hardline phone, fewer and fewer locations are wired with a hardline phone. At the same time, many locations still have a poor or non-existent broadband connection. Universally, cell phones have become our vital link to family, friends, emergency personnel, commerce, and the world beyond our doors. So what happens when because of where someone lives in our community, there is no cell service? What happens when a loved one has a medical emergency and there's no cell service? What happens when a child urgently needs to reach a parent and there's no cell service? What happens when an important text message needs to be sent or received and there's no cell service? What happens when more and more people need or choose to work from home, or a student is sick and homebound, and contact is vital for jobs and homework, and there's no cell service? What happens when a visitor to town needs to get local information linked to a QR code and there's no cell service? Do we expect people in these circumstances, and others, somehow to get to a place where cell service exists? Do we think maybe they should move to areas better served by the telecom community companies? Do we think they don't deserve the opportunities for communication that others in their community enjoy? The Wireless Telecommunications and Facilities bylaw, up for a vote tonight, is about far more than just what the opposition portrays. Along with public safety, there are social justice issues at stake in the consideration of a bylaw that provides for improved cell communications, issues about haves and have-nots, issues about lesser levels of service for many of our fellow citizens that need rectifying now. An unwillingness to trust existing scientific and health guidelines is not a valid excuse to deny members of our community help for their very real safety concerns, nor to deny them access to the benefits and comforts of being connected. The proposed Lenox bylaw brings the town into compliance with federal law. It takes into consideration how other communities across the United States and internationally have treated the issue of service upgrades. Channing, you got to wrap it up. And it offers equality to those who right now cannot depend on cell communications for their safety and for the connection to the greater world that they deserve.
Linda Miller, thirty, Clifton Court. I want to say that the necessity is what drives me to be here tonight. The necessity for us to have cell service. I live in a patch of Lenox that goes from Walker Street to Husatonic Street, and from the bypass to East Street. We don't have cell service. That's a lot of people here that's called no bars on your cellphone. You turn it on, that's because you're going to look at messages that came in while you were out shopping or whatever. But in an emergency, in a power outage, for instance, you have no way of communicating that your power is out. You have no way of communicating, even if you have a landline phone, which most of us do, because our landline phones today, for the most part, are connected to broadband. And the broadband goes out with the power out. So you have to look at the fact that there are emergencies that happen during emergencies. The, one emergency is the power outage, is the other, is the emergency in your home. You can't call the police. You can't call an ambulance. You can't call a doctor. You have to wait or just, or, or go somewhere, and if you're not capable of going, you have a real problem. You could die there. Those little devices that are call safety devices, they depend on cell service. They don't work. It is definitely something that is a health emergency, a family emergency. It is something that Lenox needs to provide for that big swath, it's not a tiny swath, of Lenox that has no service.
Good evening. I'm Amy Judd. I live at Sixth Main Street in Lenox. My comments regard the determination of need and administrative, administrative approval for special permits. The intention of this bylaw seems to be to make things easier on wireless companies so the town won't get sued. But what about the people? There is no notice to residents of anything other than a new tower. The proposed bylaw doesn't address environmental or historical resource issues. The current one does. The application content requirement asks for far fewer things than the current bylaw. This is probably intentional, but this is one of the most important parts of any application, and requirements need to be laid out in the bylaw with specificity. You must have a solid exhaustive list of the substantive criteria that are set out in the bylaw, everything you could need to evaluate the permit, and once completed, to inspect the facility. The proposed bylaw lacks the detail necessary. It lacks a list of mandatory conditions to the permit that must be met at the beginning and throughout the term of the permit. The vendor must provide evidence of structural integrity, not included in the proposed bylaw. You need a sealed, engineer-promise that they designed the project and certify that once constructed, it will also meet all applicable code consistent with current national codes. You say that you have to abide by the nineteen ninety-six TCA and FCC rules, and then you let your consultant rewrite the entire page of definitions. These are not FCC definitions. You can't have it both ways. Finally, finally, words like feasible, preferred, acceptable, general, at the discretion of the zoning board, and shall, are vague at best. Shall, in court, does not have the weight of must. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Simons. I live at seventy-five Teconic Avenue in Lenox, and I represent the Chamber of Commerce, and we are for this article, and for many reasons of which Channing had said echo our desires, but also our small businesses can benefit from this. I can't tell you how many times that we walk around town and people can't find the restaurants, the small shops, the things that they're going to, or meet people. the things that they're going to, or meet people because the connections aren't working. And I think this would bring total benefit to our community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chris Galley. I live right next door to the Curtis, 34 Main Street. And I have no prepared message. I, as you can imagine, do not want a cell tower next door to my apartment, but I just have one brief statement. Channing and the woman after him who spoke said there's no cell service. I agree that there must be cell service in Lennox. It's very, very important, and it is a social justice issue, but we have AT&amp;T, and we have perfect cellphone service in Lennox. And I know that T-Mobile also provides good cellphone service. So it's just Verizon, though, and I understand they want to compete in this market, but I do want to make clear that there is good cellphone service in Lennox. We've never had a problem with AT&amp;T. That's all.
Hi, I'm Sue Merritt. I live at 333 West Mountain Road, and I also own 90 Pittsfield Road, where one of the three cell towers in Lennox sits. I have worked in this building for 16 years. I have owned this building for eight years, and so far, I'm not glowing, and I'm still here to talk about it. I think there's been a lot of misinformation spread throughout the community regarding scare tactics and science that tries to fit the narrative of people who are scared of things that they don't necessarily fully understand. A lot of work has gone into this. I applaud the Planning Board and the time they've taken and the consultant that they've used. This is not a willy-nilly thing, folks. It is very important, as stated earlier, for the people in our town, all of the people in our town, as many as possible, to remain connected in a very quickly advancing telecommunications economy. So think about that, and I fully support this. Thank you so much.
My name is Amelia. I used to live on East Street in Lennox. And I live on East Street in Lennox, and I used to live in Pittsfield, but was forced out of my home because of getting sick from the RF radiation from a cell tower. I came to Lennox because it was a safe haven. And the cottage where I sleep, even though it is small and I don't have a room or any of the comforts of home, I also don't have radio frequency radiation making me and my little sister sick. We can't afford to move again because of the tower. When we moved from the tower and started sleeping in Lennox, I didn't vomit, I didn't get dizzy, and I didn't miss school because of headaches. To this day, I have lingering health effects. I miss my home, and I want to go back, but when I do, the symptoms return. Thankfully, our Pittsfield Board of Health has been working tirelessly towards solutions. Our community has rallied around us. People have donated land to relocate the tower, and those in our Lennox community here have generously donated into the GoFundMe to help support medical and legal expenses for our neighborhood and the 17 others harmed. I don't want to have to speak on this, but I do because I lost my health, my home, and my friends who left the neighborhood when they got sick. I lost the last three years of my childhood to this. I lost my mom to trying to help towns like Lennox get better bylaws. So what happened to us doesn't happen to anyone else. Please vote no tonight, so it's not your child or grandchild in front of the Lennox Select Board begging them for help if a tower harms them. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think Amelia was a registered voter in Lennox, so if you're not a registered voter in Lennox, we need to know that before you speak, just for, so that we can see if everyone wants you to speak. I apologize. I didn't notice it until after she was speaking.
Judy Moss, 177 West Street. I'm going to read something that I'm plagiarizing because I think it was from an article in New York City where they're putting in cell towers. "We believe that digital connectivity is a human right necessary to fully participate and access opportunities in modern society." So I'm totally in favor of voting yes, and I call the question because I have to do this for Bob McNinch.
Okay. So Judy just called the question. Hold on, hold on, folks. Hold on, folks. We need a second first. Does anyone want to second that? Okay. Okay, so this isn't debatable. So this is a two-thirds vote. So all in favor of calling the question at this time, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay?
Nay!
I can't call that. We're going to have to use the clickers for this one, folks. So this is strictly for calling the question. This has nothing to do with the vote, just calling the question at this time. So if you would like to call the question, you think you've heard enough, and you don't need to hear anymore, and you're comfortable making a vote, press 1. If you would like to hear more discussion on this, you think there's more to be heard, then you'll press 2. Okay, we're going to start now. 15 seconds. 10 seconds. 5 seconds.
Polling closed.
Polling is closed. 273 to 128. 68%, it does carry, so the question is called. So we are now going to put this to a vote.
Can't say anything.
That's it. It's called. Actually, it's very democratic if you talk about it the way we did it. So now we are voting on Article 10. A 1 vote, you support the Planning Board's proposal for the article. A 2 is you oppose. Voting is open.
15 seconds.
15 seconds. 10 seconds. 5 seconds. Polling is closed. Can I get those numbers? It is 251 are for, 147 against. That's 63%. It does not carry. Okay, that's it? All right, that's it. Thank you all for coming and for a nice town meeting. And I need a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, signify by saying stand up and go home.